Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of the Foxborough School Committee for January 24th, 2023. We'll call the meeting into order. And is there anybody here for public comment this evening? Okay, and we'll use this opportunity to remind everybody that guests are always welcome to make comments. They are comments, not necessarily discussion items for our agenda. And also to submit comments online via the community inbox. And those comments do get to every member of the committee as well as admin. So seeing none, we'll move ahead to approval of minutes, the next agenda item for January 3rd, 2023. Do any members have comments, edits, questions regarding the meeting minutes for January 3rd as presented?
Do not. I propose that we accept the minutes from the January 3rd, 2023 meeting as presented.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? We are three oh, any abstaining?
Abstaining.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't ask for that. Three zero one, even though I knew. For those wondering, oftentimes, members who are not present at a particular meeting offer to abstain for that, though they don't have to, but that's just kind of a practice. And I should also say, sorry, I didn't earlier, that the school committee member, Ms. Ladani, is on a long-planned trip tonight. But as is typical practice, for all members, comments, questions, and any concerns were discussed with admin and the chair prior to tonight's meeting. And tonight's meeting is reflective of those, although we don't need it, it's just nice. Next, Dr. Burrows, teaching and learning highlight.
I'm going to pass it off to Dr. Burrows and have her introduce it this evening.
Well, Dr. Burrows, thank you so much.
Very exciting honor. Tonight, we have a couple of guests that can make their way up to the table. We have Mrs. Nagel and Mrs. Tetralt, who are our automation and robotics teachers. And we also have a couple of students with them. Our automation and robotics course is an eighth-grade elective course as part of our Project Lead the Way curriculum. We currently offer six of the 10 Project Lead the Way courses that are available at the middle school.
Six of 10?
Six out of the 10, so we're almost completely a Project Lead the Way program up at the middle school. And I will turn it over to them.
Welcome.
Do you want me to start or?
Sure, go for it.
This is, we used to do the LEGO robotics and we were asked to try to do the Project Lead the Way. So this is our first semester actually doing it. And I want to show, so we ended up taking a course in the summertime so that we actually were the students and we had to learn how to teach them by doing them ourselves. So I brought some samples of our things that you guys are going to talk about a little bit. I think I'd rather have the kids talk about it. So Grace, why don't you talk about like, I brought the gears to start off with, like, so we can talk about like, these kind of things that we do?
So just to give a little background, I'm Tara Tetra. And the students learn, first, they start with the mechanics and they learn how to build. And then there's an automation component that comes after they learned how to build. And it's challenging because they don't necessarily get directions. So they have to try to figure out, but they, as I, as we said, we'll let them kind of talk about their experiences. We have one more student coming too.
Yeah.
Is he coming?
He said he was. Okay, anyway, hi, my name is Grace Goodman. I'm part of the selective automation and robotics. And as Ms. Nagel was saying, this is just some of the basic gear work that we had to do. A lot of the things that we had to do was kind of imagery-based. We didn't really get instructions. A lot of times, we were given like pictures and very like vague mechanical, like what you're supposed to do. It's like, it wasn't very clear, but we got like mainly image things and we had to basically kind of figure it out in our own time, in our own way. So we had to like, you know, we had to look at it, we're like, okay, so there's a spacer here. This is secure here, there's an axle here, we have to put this here. It's basically like, it was, it had a lot of like creative freedom to it. And it was also like, you had to like, really like, make sure you were paying close attention to detail, which is definitely something that I thought was like surprising, but also very valuable about the elective.
Yeah, I really did like the, just how you can pretty much like figure stuff out on your own just by like looking at it. It's just very valuable information. You can just like, look at something and it's just, it's good to know, just to be able to like see something and to be able to actually make something out of it. It's good for like your imaginative part of the brain if you're going to go into like this kind of line of work. It'd just be extremely useful.
So we started off with them learning about the gears and they, they had to learn about like a cam and follower. They had to learn about gear ratio. They had to understand like what the idler would end up changing the direction of what, of what it is and things like that. And then from there, they ended up having to build some projects. And why don't you talk about this lovely, so they got a choice whether to do a wind turbine after they learned how to do the gears and do the, or do a pull toy. So you can show your pull toy and talk about the cam and follower.
So what I actually really loved about this is that with the instruct, well, there wasn't really any instructions. You got complete like creative freedom to do whatever you felt like on this design. So what me and my classmates did, we did a cam and follower on like a pull toy. It still is in troubleshooting, but, because it doesn't work 100% that way. So it's still a little bit of troubleshooting, but.
That's innovation.
Yeah, you're still in the. Yeah, so, but it is, I really just love this activity and just how much creative freedom like everybody got over like the project. Obviously, it's still kind of like there and everything, but we could definitely like, in later parts of the design, we could definitely like, you know, spice it up a little bit and make it like more like working.
We just need to tighten the screw.
So how long are the, I mean, when you're given, when you're starting that activity, what's the brief, the project brief look like? Like, how long are the instructions and stuff?
Um, I mean, for this one, it was just like pick something of your choice. And then like, basically, you got, I mean, complete liberty to do what you want with it.
So what would hap, yes, so what would happen is they'd end up having to have some, some things that it was supposed to do. So it had to have two different types of motion on it. And they, so they had the, what they needed to do and then the constraints on it, on where they could go with it. So from the mechanical, then we ended up going into the.
So they had, and they had built eight, I believe, eight different, um, different types of mechanical devices. So then they got to pick from those, which is, you chose, they said, the cam and follower and the.
The pull toy, yeah.
Yeah, so they could have picked other ones. They could have done like a rack and pinion and something else. So there were, there were a bunch of different things that they could have included and they had.
Yeah.
This is.
Hey, Nikunj.
Grab a chair.
So for example, like they were saying, you could either do a pull toy or you could do a windmill. So we have a kind of a partner base. So we have a pretty small class size, which I thought was really great. And we were basically partnered up, these two were partners, I was partners with another student. And for me and my partner, we did the wind turbine. Like I said, it was like an open choice. And for us, you know, what was really great was that we were able to take like, you know, a creative spin on what we wanted to do with the wind turbine. And it's, it's just like that kind of freedom that we were allowed, that it wasn't like, it was like, you know, it was facilitation. It wasn't just like, you know, you have to do this, you have to do that. It was very open and it was very free and we could be creative and we could be imaginative and we could like figure things out. And that was definitely very valuable.
And I'm trying, your wind turbine, you took it apart though, so because you were working on something else after. But it got really fast, right?
Yeah.
And you automated.
Yeah, so we put a motor on it, it went really fast. It got to the point where we decided that we had to take it apart. And it was, it was becoming a bit of a hazard. And so it kind of, yeah, it, it was definitely, but it was.
Does your team still have all their fingers?
Yes, they have all of their fingers. It was, we had to write a couple of warnings on there. But yeah, we got, we, what we did with that is we disassembled it and then we turned it into an airplane launcher. So that was fun. Paper airplane launcher.
Ms. Goodman, I know you introduced yourself, I was honoring if you gentlemen could also introduce yourselves.
So I'm Charles Robinson, I'm also part of the selective, as you know.
Mr. Robinson.
I'm Nikunj Nagpal, I'm also part of the selective.
Welcome.
So what about some of the planning that you do? So do you have to put together before you can build the turbine and build the devices? You have to put a whole plan of thinking, like what, I'm thinking you probably do. You have to decide what you were going to try to put into the project and how you're going to get there and then kind of think it through. Is that also part of the planning and the coursework? Kind of getting a baseline of where, what you want to sketch in or create, whatever it is?
Yeah, so for us, at least for my group, we did the wind turbine, as you know. And we started with a sketch, we knew that we had certain requirements, it had to have at least two different moving parts. It was the same for the pull toy. And for us, basically, what we did is we started with a basic sketch of like, this is the gear, this is what it's going to look like, we'll have the motor part over here. But then, once we actually got, you know, started with the building, it definitely, a lot of things changed. You know, we had to troubleshoot, we had to change things along the way. Obviously, didn't just stick to the sketch itself, but the sketch was definitely something that was important to like start us off. And it was something that, you know, we strive to do before we did every project.
Yeah, I know, we had to go through a lot of different like trials and errors. And like even after like the first like few, we still had to like, you know, reskinch it, redesign it, rework everything. You know, like have like new parts, try to fix like the different, like how much chain was there and just very like technical aspects of it. And I think that's what was just really great about it.
So first, I'm, the duck is distracting, like not distracting me, I'm fascinated by the duck.
That was supposed to be on the top.
Oh, okay.
Got it, okay. Okay, so that's still in the innovation phase, right? Thank you.
So they had to have this pull toy that did another thing.
Perfect, perfect. So what fascinates me about this is so typically in any team, right, there's three things. It's people, process, and technology or resources. You've got the technology right here in front of you. You've got the process worked out where they give you the image and you figure it out. The people aspect is really interesting in this kind of thing, right? Because you guys all clearly get excited about this. How do you manage with your teammates the different ideas that you each have about the direction you want to go? Because we all look at that and say, oh, okay, I think we should do it this way, or I think we should do it this way. And then you have ideas, so you've got to work together as a team to figure out which way you want to test first. And then when do you say we want to switch directions? Or we need to take the test from here and move it this direction instead? How do you work on that, on that people aspect of this?
You guys want to take this one?
Yeah, sure. So I know, like with me and him, sorry, with me and him, I know, um, we definitely went through a bunch of different, like both of our designs. I know we had to test like my design a few times and then I realized like his design was a lot more efficient with the, like the chain. I was thinking of doing it some other complicated way. But I know he was, his idea was a lot like smarter and it was just a lot more efficient. So I think the people aspect is very, very important because, I mean, you can just like bounce ideas off each other and it just makes like the most efficient thing that you can like think of.
Yeah. I think what's really great about the selective, it's definitely fostering like, you know, a sense of teamwork instead of competition. So, you know, with your partners, my partner was Eli, and basically, we had different ideas about what we wanted to do. He was like, oh, we should do this, and I was like, oh, maybe we could do that. And we were able to kind of like make a compromise. And by combining our two ideas, we made the thing faster and it just worked better. So just being able to take those differences and make that into a strength was definitely something that was important.
Thank you.
So what's next? For you, what's, yeah, what, I mean, what, in, in, in the, in the scope of, of your course, I mean, how much longer do you have all that left?
We only have three days.
Okay, so you all, oh, you, okay, so this is semester.
Yeah.
And you all end on Friday.
Yeah.
Nice. And so what's, what's wrap-up look like for you all?
Well, for us, wrap-up is kind of bittersweet, I guess. We have like a, a final project thing that we can do where we just kind of like do this test bed with like a lot of these different things on it. We have to take our part of our beautiful inventions, it's very sad, but it's.
The dreaded turbine is going to be.
The tur, well, the turbine was already destroyed, you know, it was, it was too.
For the good of the people, yes, we understand. That's great.
Yeah, so this, like, as I had said before, this is our first time doing it. We've learned a lot of different ways that we're going to do it so that the kids can move forward a little bit more. For one thing, we had all of the kids do all of the gears that like the.
All the different.
All of the different ones. And we figured that we're going to try to change that so that we can get them onto the next level, which is after we've done the distance learning coding. And so from the coding, they can actually go on to make it so that it's motorized as opposed to just pulling and using a hand crank. So that's where, that's the plan for our next, the next, the next version of this, yeah.
Thanks.
What, so thank you guys for being the test case for this. It sounds like you had fun, right? What advice would you give for the next selective that's coming in to do this?
I'd say not to rush anything, because like, it's like the journey, that's the, you know, real treasure of it. I really had like a lot of fun building everything, so, yeah.
Yeah, back to what Grace said, it's, it's not competition, it's more like teamwork. And like, you shouldn't rush it to be like, to complete something fast than somebody else. You should take your time with it and make sure it's like stable and good. Because then you'll feel more accomplished and like more proud of yourself for like completing what you've done.
What I would say is that the instructions are definitely important, but I would say that being able to creatively take something on is important. You know, engineering and coding, they're all fun, they're all like, you know, very important skills. But that kind of like fun and chaotic energy is also very valuable and was something that made the selective like, you know, really fun, it was kind of like the highlight of my day, I would always look forward to it. And also to make sure to keep track of all your stuff, because we had a lot of really cool, like, you know, things that were scattered here and there. Another part of the selective that was really fun was like the scavenger hunt. It was like, we were, I would, so basically, what was happening was no one could find anything. So I'd constantly be hearing like, Grace, where's this? I'd be like, and then so we would have to, we had to, we did like a day of organizing. It was basically, you know, you have to go here and you have to go there. And it's kind of like, you have to scavenge for all the parts you're looking for. Because even with something like this, right?
Right.
There isn't like a box that has all the parts you need. It's like, they're everywhere. Like, there's like, the part you need for this thing is in this box, and the thing you need over there is in this box. And they're all like prepackaged, I don't know why they made it this way, but they did. So it was kind of, it was, that was also another fun part of it. It was kind of, you know, if you see it from it, from a certain perspective, it was like, you know, it was pretty enjoyable being able to be like, oh, this is over here, this is over there. It was kind of a, it was an interesting and kind of like fun aspect of it that was unexpected, but also very interesting and lovable.
An added challenge.
Yeah, exactly, it was great, honestly, I personally enjoyed it.
Well, with that regard, I could say it's probably one of the most real-life-like things you could probably engage in. Because that's a lot of what we do in our work life is, where's this thing?
I thank you guys, those were three of the best responses. I could have, I couldn't have even imagined how good those responses were to my question. So thank you for your, your vulnerability and your trust there in giving us those responses, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, now, and unsolicited advice for you three, I know your teachers are always very good. Her teacher's very good about asking for feedback about the courses. But in three months from now, after they're done asking for your feedback, you're going to have an idea. Keep, please keep sharing it with them, okay? Because it will be valuable to the next cohort that comes through. Because as, I mean, with any new course, with any new course that involves creativity and, and design thinking, that, that, that type of structure and wisdom that you've created by going through this the first time is invaluable. So thank you.
Any other members have questions? Also, and I was remiss, over here, we have Nathan. Nathan, do you mind introducing yourself, because I didn't do it before, because I'm rude?
I'm Nathan, I'm a junior.
Hi, Nathan.
I'm Nathan, I'm a junior at FHS. I play football, it's been my whole life.
And why are you here, Nathan?
Thank you.
No, why are you here?
Oh.
And we're glad you're here, but. In what capacity?
Well, I mean, I watch these all at home, so I figured I might as well be comfortable than sit here and listen to it firsthand than at home.
Nathan's our new student rep on Foxborough School Committee.
Nathan also sits on the student, the superintendent student advisory council.
Really?
So yes, so I have the pleasure of meeting with Nathan monthly for the last couple of years and he's a great contributor to that group.
Thank you.
And we're going to test out that statement that you watch these all from home.
Yeah, Mr. Pearson actually has a quiz drawn up.
So thank you guys very, very much.
Thank you.
I guess Ms. Frazier in the back was very proud as she's sitting there listening to all of those answers.
Thank you for coming and thank you for.
Thank you, Ms. Nagel and Ms. Tetra.
Thank you for your adventurous spirit with us. You all knew the course was new, we knew the course was new, but it's, I, I, I hope it sticks around for many years. It seems very valuable, so.
Yeah, it's really great that we have all these like wonderful opportunities, you know, the selective, we have the invention convention thing.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, I was here for that last year too.
You were.
And it was just like, this, this school, this town has a lot of like really great opportunities, you know, for this creative engineering. And I was like, yay, this is an elective, I was so happy about it, I was like, I'm going to the selective.
More to come, we hope. So thank you all very much for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Burrows?
No, I think the, the students really did a great job and advertised the program. I, I hope more kids are signing up for these elective classes. They're a really great opportunity to get some hands-on engineering experience. Project Lead the Way is just a wonderful resource and we're really lucky to have it here.
Well, given that we're talking about budget later, at least for my part, I think you all are getting your money's worth with it in the sense that the buy-in is steep, but then what you can do with each of those programs is pretty remarkable.
Yep, yep, and it's also, it's a grant-funded program as well. And there's a significant amount of support. There's a, a network of Project Lead the Way schools that we're able to connect with and engage with throughout the year. And they also help us with planning the course, planning materials, what materials we need to purchase. And then they're, they're also a great resource to, in terms of supporting us to think about where we can expand. This course in particular is a new course this year. And we, we already have five Project Lead the Way courses that are running at the middle school level as well. So we are, we're growing it. We're in a great position right now with our science curriculum review and our technology education curriculum review too, to continue to talk about these opportunities and expand on them for our kids. It's really important that they have that hands-on experience with science.
Absolutely, it is. And we've heard it, and will be a few other glimpses of this throughout the other, tonight's agenda. But there's currently a shortage in, in our workforce of people who do that type of thing. So this type of thinking early and young is, is, is really important to foster.
Absolutely.
Next up, we have our superintendent update. Dr. Burrows, would you like to?
Sure, so just a reminder, kindergarten registration is open. So from all that are of age, meaning they're five, by August 31st, on or before. So it's really important to reach out, particularly if we have neighbors who have an incoming kindergartner and they don't have any other students in the schools. Reach out and let them know if they have any questions, you know, they can call the schools, but registration's open. We're continuing to watch, I think, we've talked a little bit about, you know, flu and different sicknesses and things that are going around, so we're watching our attendance. And that's, it was worse before the holiday break than it was afterwards. Our last week and then this week has continued to get better. So it's, it's really not atypical when we look at our student absences across the schools. It's more elementary when we look at students that have been out. But as far as the, like the average rate, it's, it runs anywhere between 1 and 7% on average, depending on the level. So it's really not atypical, which is, which is good.
That's wonderful.
Just some reminders of some upcoming events and then deadlines, dates too. One was already mentioned, that we're ending term two at the end of this week. So at the high school, we've got a modified schedule that's taking place with midterms. And as a reminder, they'll have early releases starting tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday with midterms. We also will have the kindergarten specialist report cards that go out, that'll be coming out this time of year. And to think about the term where it's quarters for a middle school and high school to have half the year at this point just seems crazy. I think about one of the comments that Mr. Donovan had said in one of his newsletters to families. And it was that we had already experienced the longest period of time without any breaks when we got up to the holiday break in December. And I never really thought about it that, that way, because we always think about after the holiday break, how quickly things go. But it's, it's going to start going even that much faster, which is important that we have kids in, in school, right? And that people are staying healthy. Lots going on with winter sports, as I'm sure you're all aware, lots of games, lots of meets. We also have concerts coming up, we have another one this Thursday.
Thursday.
At seven o'clock at the high school. We have tomorrow night vaping in your child. This is the middle school and high school assemblies that we had, vaping presentations for our students. And this is the one for parents. It is virtual, it was sent out through school messenger, so it'll be through Zoom. There was a Zoom link on that communication that went out. And I know that principals are following up with reminders on that as well. But that one is really, I think, helpful for parents to think about the conversations they're having at home. It's conversation starters, it's facts about vaping. I'm kind of dispelling the myths when talking about, you know, vaping and other substances too. And the conversations to be able to have some engaging questions, just conversation starters that parents will be able to take to their dinner table or in their homes and to have those conversations when we're talking about the facts about vaping products, we're talking about the associated risk and the psychology and habits of addiction, conversations centered on that. And then also really important strategies for intervening for those that are already vaping and to really be able to provide those resources to parents and to families. And for them to be able to have a Q and A at the end as well. So that's tomorrow night. Ms. Fidler, who is going to be presenting that, she will make sure to have time for the questions and answers at the end of that presentation as well. Mentioned the Winterfest concert, Thursday at seven at the high school. The other piece that I wanted to mention, I don't know if Richard has anything else to offer, that the Hockamok League is designated this week as Mental Health Week. And this is across all, thinking about all student athletes and thinking about the mental health awareness and the importance of that and engaging in any of the sporting events. And that is something that went out to all of the, the teams. But again, the awareness piece and the importance of mental health. I don't know, Richard, if you wanted to add anything else?
Actually, I'd just like to thank the Hockamok League. I, I do have an awareness of what's going on around the state, and this is one of the first ones I've seen. So very proud of the Hockamok League A.D.s that they stepped up for this. This has also been a push from the NCAA over the past two or three years that we focus a lot on the physical and of our, of the athletes too, but we have, the, the pure physical, but we've missed the, the social, emotional, and the mental side of things too. So it's a, it's a great initiative by the Hockamok League to step forward and do that. And I think it's really a great idea, help our athletes, awareness is so valuable in this regard.
And it's their partnership with Kyle Cares.
Yep.
As far as really designating this, this week as Mental Health Week. Couple of things next week, Program of Studies and AP Advanced Paper Center Night at the High School is taking place on Thursday. The Program of Studies piece is the first part and the AP Potential is the next part of that, that night, which starts at six o'clock. The other thing that's going to be taking place, we've talked a little bit about it, is that we're in the process of NEASC, which is our accreditation that takes place every 10 years.
Yes.
It's a little off, we're, we're closer to 11, 12 years, that's not us, that's COVID. And really making that be a little bit more than 10 years. But just as a reminder for anyone that may not be familiar, this is the, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. It's the accrediting agency and it is a process that we go through every 10 years. And there's other milestones along the way. But the important piece that we're doing right now is, they have a part, in 2020, they changed their standards. And there's five standards. And the second one of those has to do with the teaching part, which is the portrait of the graduate. And that portrait of the graduate piece is something that we're not just going to look at at the high school. We're really looking at that as a K-12. And what our students are, what are the important transferable skills that they need at each of the levels? Elementary, middle school, high school. And so for that reason, we're not just engaging stakeholders at the high school level. We're bringing in community, bringing in students to say, what are the things that are important when some? are important when somebody graduates from Foxborough High School that they need to have when we're thinking about preparing them for college and the workforce going forward? So, on Tuesday, actually not Tuesday, Wednesday, we're going to have a community-focused group that's going to take place at the high school from 9:30 to 11:30. So, Mr. Donovan and the two co-chairs of for NEASC, which is Dr. Wazaluski and Ms. Driko, they're sending out invitations. We've identified community members from the town side, also through our PTO, through our PAC, parent leaders. We've brought that to them as well to see if they are able to come to either that morning session on Wednesday, February 1st, from 9:30 to 11:30, or also hosting one in the evening if that's more convenient, which is Monday, February 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00. And so, I'd like to extend that invitation to school committee too. If you're able to attend either of those, or one of you, or more than, more than one of you, that would be fantastic. And if there's anyone in the community that is also interested in participating that we wouldn't normally reach out to through our parent leaders or those groups, they can email Mr. Donovan and he can send the information. It's important for us to be able to have the RSVPs.
Yes.
Based on numbers for those groups. But Dr. Whitner, who was the facilitator when we did our Planning for Success, is an outside consultant. We also have her working with us to really marry those and align that work. She has many years of experience with NEASC, so she brings a separate skill set to us as well. But again, the point is, we have these focus groups taking place with many stakeholders. Those are the two dates and the times. So, if you're able to attend, please let me know or Mr. Donovan know, because we really want to be able to have that vision that's going to look at the knowledge, the understanding, the transferable skills, and really the dispositions that are necessary for students as they leave when they graduate to be able to be successful in the future, what that looks like.
Nice plug.
The only other thing that's kind of in the future is coming up a little bit later in February, but I wanted to mention it, and I'll mention it again, is February 15th. And that is the Safe Coalition and Minding Your Mind. These are, the Safe Coalition we had before come to in plain sight, which is showing different ways that things can be really camouflaged and they're for substance awareness and looking for certain things that unfortunately people will hide in different ways, and they're right there in plain sight. So, they have a mock setup. The last time we had them, it's like a bedroom. And you could see different items that were there and how things are being hidden. So, that's going to be part of the presentation that's going to take place. And the other part of that is going to be John Mattelman, who is from Minding Your Mind, and he was here present with a student that presented, when we're looking at the secret life of teens and tweens, and his presentation when we are getting into addiction, we're getting into other types of worries, to be really simply stating worries that we have when we're thinking about the thoughts and feelings and actions of adolescents. So, I'll mention that again, but that's coming up in mid-February. But I wanted to mention the piece with the Safe Coalition and in plain sight. I just, I know as a parent myself, seeing that setup, it was something that really just caused pause and some very different conversations, I know, and that I had with, even with my own children, aside from students, that we had conversations here in school.
Dr. Burrows, with those programs, the in plain sight and then the secret life of
The Minding Your Mind.
Yeah. Well, are they, are those geared towards families in town or students or both?
It's for families, for adults to come in.
Awesome. And that'll be in person?
Yes.
Lovely.
Five to six. All community members are invited. It'll take place in the first floor of the media center at the high school.
Thank you.
But again, more information will go out, but it's just an important one. Wanted to mention it, you know, early on.
Sure. And if I might, to stand on your shoulders with your good announcement about the profile of the graduate, there are many, many, many things that are mandated of schools and school districts. When they get to do something like that aspect of NEASC, that's, I think, for many educators and many educational leaders is the fun part, which is to say, what do we want people to leave here with? And it's a thing that they're not asked enough. And NEASC is asking, and the high school will respond. And I think that's, I think it's a very important discussion and for people who care about the long-term outcomes for our students. So, those are nice discussions to be part of. So, thank you for setting it up so nicely.
I'd also add too, to your point, that this process only happens once every 10 years. So, it may seem, if you're an elementary school parent or a middle school parent, that it may not apply to you.
It does.
But, but we're mapping out the next 10 years of our, of our experience here in Foxborough, and that's why it's really critical that we get all voices, not just our high school families at the table.
Right. Because those discussions directly shape thoughts on the strategic goals that this team puts together every year, and then we get to vet every year and look at. And then it's kind of the, the long view. So, I can't stress it enough for folks who are interested to show up for those two sessions and be heard.
And boy, did we hear some transferable skills before with our teaching and learning ally.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Exactly. I mean, and those things are not, those things don't necessarily show up on MCAS. Shocker. But, I mean, they don't. And, and, but they're, they're so important. Anything else, Dr. Burrows?
No, the only other thing that I would mention is there was a large contingency of us that were able to participate in a threat assessment training full day that took place with the Boston FBI. And Chief Grace, I'd like to thank him and our SROs for being able to have as many people. We had the largest contingency, Foxborough. It was down at the Bourne Police Station. And that is something that we continue to talk about, is school safety, and, and that is number one priority. So, it was a great training. We will continue to do the work that we're doing, but it's informing the work that we're doing, so.
Well, who was, who did you have down there?
So, it was myself. It was Mr. Hyer, as far as Director of Technology.
Sure.
It was administrator from each elementary, middle, and high. At the elementary, we actually had two. We had our two new principals, Ms. Morrissey and Mr. Worth that went.
Good.
Dr. DiMarco went from the middle school, and Mr. Scuzzaro, the new assistant principal from the high school, went. We also had from the guidance, mental health side, Mr. Servideo.
Good.
Went. Chief Grace was there with us all day, as well as the three SROs.
Really?
In attendance.
Nice.
So, and then there was a large group from the Foxborough Regional Charter School as well. So, it, it really, we, there was a representative from the Department of Ed of somebody I've known for years, and she came over and she said, this is amazing. I can't wait to tell the commissioner the number of people from Foxborough that were here.
Yeah. Get all the, get all the principals around there and get, I mean, meaning the people who are directly concerned and get them there. So, I'm glad you brought such a large contingent. That's lovely. Thank you, Dr. Burrows. Any questions or comments or follow-ups from the committee?
I just, I know we talked about the, the work that's being done around vaping and addiction, and I would just encourage parents and families to participate as much as they can. It is, addiction is a challenge, and it is regardless of what the addiction is to. And there are all sorts of resources available to help identify and help intervene as early as possible, because as we all know, the earlier, the earlier you can intervene or identify that there is an opportunity there, the easier the resolution tends to be. So, I highly encourage families to take advantage of that. I really appreciate the fact that we are offering those kind of opportunities for our families in the community.
Please.
I would just say, can you repeat the dates for when those focus groups are?
Yes. So, Wednesday, February 1st, 9:30 to 11:30.
AM.
And Monday, February 6th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Thank you so much for a comprehensive update, Dr. Burrows. That's a lot going on. Much appreciated and much to look forward to. Moving ahead, the next agenda item is the FY24 Budget Public Hearing and Vote Recommendation. We'll remind anybody listening or here watching that this is the last step for our committee in a month-and-a-half-long process for us and a more-than-two-month process for administration as they look to put together this budget. This is the last step. While we will be voting tonight, this is at least the fourth time we've talked about this in public meeting. So, with that, Dr. Burrows, anything to introduce?
I don't have anything new to introduce.
Fair enough.
I think that, you know, it's important to remember that we approach the budget from a, it's a ground-up approach. It's line by line. We go through that every year in assessing what the needs are. It is a budget that maintains a high level of service for students. It is one where we looked really critically at the positions through the grant, the ESAR funds, those positions that were there and what services are important to the town going forward. But at the same time, we still had a reduction in number of positions. So, I think that it's, you know, it's very thoughtful. It adjusts for staffing based on student needs, but really identifying a budget that's important of what the town values. So, I'll stop there and turn it over to Mr. Yutna, because I know that also with the CIP piece as well, you might have anything to add in addition to just the regular budget.
Yeah. I think to what Dr. Burrows basically just said, the, I think the key to this budget, not only are we maintaining the curriculum and advancing that in, in the way that the, I think the school committee is looking for us to do, but we also are advancing the social and emotional, you know, talents within the school district and retaining those. And those are ones we would have lost without the ESAR funding originally. That's what brought them in, but with that going away, having to figure out how to maintain some of those that have really proven to be very important for the kids, you know, based on what they've gone through for the last three years. So, this budget accomplishes that. And, and again, to Dr. Burrows's point, with still a reduction, you know, of six positions, I think that's pretty well done, so.
It's really maintaining a strong commitment to a well-rounded education.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. The CIP side of it, I know you're going to have to take two separate votes, but the CIP side of it really relatively for us, kind of plain vanilla, in the sense that there's only really the four items, the completion of the music equipment replacement, the third year of that at 50,000, the copiers, which is, as you know, an annual, and the school buses, as well as the technology replacement. So, pretty much our standard things, you know, we've had some other things in the past. I will say that the, the harder thing that we're facing as we move forward here is with the, you know, school buses, just the increase in cost has just skyrocketed. We're about 25% higher just on a bus in the last couple of years.
On everything.
Per bus.
Yeah. And that's, I know with fuel, I know.
The fuel, and that's the minor part. It's trying to buy the buses now, and trying to even get them. I mean, we
Right. The actual baseline cost of the bus went through the route.
Yeah. It's gone from just over 90,000 to about 117,000 for next year, so.
And that's just reflective of readjusting costs to the actual cost to build the bus that is going to carry students for that.
Yeah. I think it's still part and parcel with the economic times we're in and the fact that they know, pretty much in everything we do, that they can get a little bit more money, and they're going to get it while they can. I think it will come back. I don't believe these pricing can be sustained for a long term, but we can't afford to just sit and wait.
No.
We need to replace the buses on a yearly basis. You know, we've had conversations with our maintenance department down at Town DPW, and, you know, they have concerns. Quite honestly, they'd like to see us replace four buses.
Yeah.
And quite honestly, we just know that money is not in the, in the budget at this point. I may come back to you, depending on how our year goes with our budget, that if there's the capability of a third bus in the, in the end of the year, I may come back and ask for your to reconsider that one at that point.
Sure.
But it won't be coming from CIP, because we just know that there's not going to be enough money there.
Okay. Thank you for the heads up as well. All right. So, if, let's, I'll, I'll, and just in a sec, I'll ask for questions, comments on any of it, but I'll just note to the committee and all of us that we're actually taking three votes tonight. We're going to vote the budget, absentee athletic budget. Talk about that in a minute. We'll vote in the athletic budget, and then we're going to vote CIP. Okay. So, but as has been the case with the committee for a long time, if there's questions on anything, please just ask since the folks with the, the knowledge is here, are here. Anything to add?
No. No, I think, I appreciate, as always, the process that you walk us through, the level of, the level of detail that you provide to us, and just the, everything is based on the data and, and, you know, what you're doing, but also the emotional talents you bring to the process. It makes it, when we get to this point, typically it makes it very easy for me
Yes.
To, you know, approve, you know, the budget from my perspective.
I'd echo what you said, Mr. Canfield. I mean, I think I can speak back now to even six years ago when I started on AdCom and sitting in meetings with the school administration and members of the administration yourselves included, spending quite literally hours, hours over several meetings, just educating, educating the committee on every single question that they had. People would send questions in advance. You'd come with the data. They'd ask questions there. If you knew the answer off the top of your head or right with the data in front of you, you'd answer it. If not, you'd get back to them as responsible people do. And just the amount of due diligence that you all and your departments, the seriousness with which you take this process is evident appreciated, and I think you've all taken pains to educate every member of this committee as we've come up through it. And so, for that, we thank you.
Anything else to add? Okay. Mr. Pearson, will you?
Well, I just want to know how we're doing it. So, are we doing it a total minus a number or minus line items?
Minus line items.
I think the simplest way to do it is just to take the total budget less the athletic budget. So, you'd be looking at a number, the total is 40,765,995. Subtracting the athletic budget, you'd be looking to approve the first line at 39,399,076.
Okay. 39,399,076.
No, 39,999,076.
Wow, that's not what I heard the first time. So, thank you for that.
Say 39,399,076. 39,999,076. Got it. 076. Got you. I got the number.
Thank you for asking that, because that's
Yeah, I got it. Yep.
And then what is the athletic line?
766,919.
766.
Correct? Yep.
All right. Did you do that in your head?
No, wait, wait. I had, I had
Okay.
I looked it up and I wrote it down. So, I wish I was, yeah.
He actually did it in his sleep, and then now he did it in his head.
And then he had auto-correct, because we didn't understand Bill's, Bill's number.
And then
Yeah. So, I'd record, I would like to motion approval of the listed budget at 39,999,076, which is minus the high school athletics line item.
A second.
All those in favor? 400. That passes. With that, Mr. Pearson, thank you. We'll call you in a moment. For those confused about what's going on, Mr. Pearson works for the MIAA, which handles high school athletics, and so anything involving high school athletics, he usually steps out, which is both his right and responsibility, so. And he just handles that proactively, because he takes us very seriously. So, now?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the athletic budget.
Thank you.
At a total, an amount of 766,919.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. All those in favor? That's three zero zero, and that does pass. Next, we'll call Mr. Pearson in and consider the CIP budget for FY24. Thank you. Thank you, Janet. That's nice. And for folks while we're listening here, this, Dr. Berdus and Mr. Yucan take great pains to say this in the first meeting. It's usually early December when this, when the budget proposal is presented, and that's where you, for folks who are interested in this stuff, start paying attention there. AdCom Advisory Committee also considers the budget in as much detail as we do, and they offer their own recommendations to the selectmen, and it's not until we pass it here and then it goes to town meeting that it gets actually approved. At-town meeting, it's a single line item. So for folks who are really in town, who are really interested in the budget, you want to do, you do want to get involved early in that December process. So as we are here, as I mentioned, this is our, I believe, our fourth meeting discussing the budget. So with that, wouldn't anybody like to propose a motion regarding CIP? Welcome back.
Thanks.
It passed, by the way.
Yeah.
What is the?
Oh, sorry.
What is the, what is the dollar amount for the CIP?
Five hundred and. CIP total is 504,000.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the CIP, the capital improvement plan budget of 504,000.
My second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Thank you, Mr. Canfield. All those in favor? That's four zero zero. They pass, and I'll congratulate Admin on the tremendous amount of work that we did this and we said it early on.
Yeah.
The amount, there's not enough fine-tooth, lice-sized combs on the planet to model all the work you did to go through this, especially considering slight enrollment adjustment, losing staff for that, and what funding that we as a district and as a community decided to carry forward because it was just good for kids. So thank you so much for all the work you did to talk to the frontline providers, to talk to families, to talk to your teachers, to talk to your building leads, and to talk to each other. So it really shows in this budget. I couldn't be more grateful.
Just, I don't have the actual date in front of me, but the first week of.
February 8th.
Yeah, February 8th is our meeting with the AdCom.
Fair enough.
So that's the next step in the process. As you just highlighted, we have to, as a school committee, you have to approve by the end of January, which obviously you've just done.
Yes.
The budget to move forward. Now, the finance committee will have its shot at it, and then we also will meet with the Board of Selectmen to have a discussion with them about it. But the finance committee usually takes two, two different meetings over the last couple of years to review different things, so.
Given the democracy we've created, there are a lot of hands and voices that get involved in funding our schools, as well there should be. So thank you for going through all those steps, everyone. Moving forward, let's look at winter 2023 FPS community report. Oh, I love this every year. Please.
I thought I would start off by giving a little bit of background on this, just for anyone that this might be new for them to see. We've been doing this for 12 years now, so we started in 2012. And at that particular time, the reason that we wanted to put this together was to be able to show the community what the Foxborough Public Schools are all about. This could be anyone that's moving new to town. This could be a Realtor being able to hand this out. So it doesn't just go out to our families, it goes out to every single community member, and it is sent out snail mail.
Right.
So, you know, spacing and all of that's always very important in how it, the final product gets printed. But I think it's a great communication tool to really be able to show when we think about budget and all of the resources that are provided for our students, what, what that translates to. And at the same time, it lets them know, like, what we value, what are some of the things that are, that are new, whether it's maybe they didn't know about. And the, the last part that I'll, I'll say before I turn it over to Dr. Berdus is that I think that it's really important to get a fresh look, and she's been able to provide that by coming in new. So like I said, we've been doing this for 12 years, but having someone else new to look at it, it's always great to see, well, what questions do they have? I know from last year, you had some different suggestions. We also listened to parent leaders and gave the last year's community report to them. But even when we first started this 12 years ago, we called it the District Report Card, and it was much more data laden instead of telling the story. So it was really nice to have Dr. Berdus have fresh eyes to look at it, and I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. I actually did enjoy myself designing the community report this year. It was actually very helpful for me, being that it's my first year here in Foxborough. It was a great opportunity for me to learn more about how we communicate out to the Foxborough community, so I enjoyed that part of it. As Dr. Berdus had mentioned, we sought feedback first before we began designing what this would look like this year. So I did watch last year's school committee meeting where you gave your feedback on the community report. That seemed like a good place to start. And to refresh your memory from last year, you had made the request to reduce some of those graphs and charts.
Dr. Berdus, can I stop you? Nathan, do you remember what we said last year about this?
What?
Listen this year, he didn't say about that.
Sorry, okay, sorry about that. That was, that was, that was the test right there.
He's only up till October.
Sorry, Dr. Berdus, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's all right, that's all right. And, you know, the, the other piece that you had asked about was making sure that we were communicating what makes Foxborough Public Schools special.
Yes.
So, and that was actually also the feedback that we got from our parent leaders group. They asked, we had shared with them last year's report, there was a good amount of charts and tables on there last year as well, so we did reduce those. And our, our parent leaders had suggested that we, we engage in more storytelling about what the student experience is like here. So, and, and also they asked that we reduce the amount of acronyms and edgy speak that we tend to use in, in the report. So tried to describe Project Lead the Way as opposed to abbreviating it as PLTW, just to give you an example. And they also wanted us to stress our community partnership, so that was something that used to be in the report previously. We pulled it back in this year, so you can see that as well. I do, I do really enjoy QR codes. I think they're a great tool, and if we're mailing this out to every family in the town of Foxborough, what a great opportunity to advertise our kindergarten registration forms and get that, that process going if they haven't already heard that enough. And then the other piece that I, I think families will really appreciate on the third page here, the QR code to our guidance department website. What's really exciting about what the guidance department is doing at Foxborough right now, they have students producing videos about all of the elective classes and course opportunities that we offer up at the high school, and those will be published live on the website by the time families have this in their hand. So it'll actually be more of an interactive experience for them to learn about those course opportunities. And I'm not sure if you have any questions. I, you know, I tried to highlight our work with inclusive practices, our community work. We're, we're building a community garden at the IGO School that I thought was really special. We have unified sports this year and tried to highlight that as well. And what's really great, I know that Ms. Frazier had spoken about this at her school improvement plan presentation earlier this year, but she held a constitutional convention at the Ahern this year.
That's right.
And they put together school-wide expectations for studentship and citizenship. They're now posted, they're, they're getting ready to be published across the school, so it was a really great event at the middle school. Turn it over to you if you have any questions or suggestions or feedback.
For the first time in six years, I don't have suggestions. Sorry. No, honestly, I take this thing very seriously because it does go out to the community, and I just, you're, it's always good, it's always improving, the district always takes feedback seriously, and I think the, the shifts you made will make it a lot more accessible to more people, so thank you. And the personal touches, which were evident also in your application file when you started looking at jobs here, are also evident, that you're good at this. So, no, I, I thank you for that.
I, I did have a very good time.
Yeah, I, I, I was hoping you would, and it shows.
I thought it was great.
It really is.
Easy, interesting and easy to read, which is always helpful. It definitely, you know, catches your eye about just including all of the different schools. It's not just focused on high schools, it's, you know, all of them. And I, I just keep remembering back to seven-plus years ago when we were considering moving to Foxborough, you know, this was one of the things we looked at, and it was really important, and really, I thought showed a great snapshot for how involved Foxborough is with the schools. And so it's, it's always interesting to look at it again, to see how much everything's grown over that timeframe. And I do always like to see the recent college acceptances because it makes it, I think, interesting, especially if you don't have kids in the high school, to kind of see what is going on, where kids are looking at and potentially going to. That makes it kind of interesting. So thank you for listening to feedback and working very hard at pulling this together. Thank you.
I, I had just two small comments. On, on the front page of the document, the four pillars of success and strategic objectives, I think those, it might be better to add the word district to that because I think just saying four pillars of success and strategic objective, then moving into facilities, teaching and learning, and I was thinking of a descriptor that just better locks it in as the district four pillars of success. By just stating of four pillars of success and strategic objectives, I don't know who owns that.
Sure.
Because it's not, if, if you read the, if it's not the portrait of the graduate's four pillars of success. Is it? It, it's not, right? So, so when I first read it and looked at it, I saw the portrait of the FPS graduate as kind of the headline, which I thought was very good, but then I'm like, oh, whose four pillars are they? So I thought maybe giving it a descriptor, district or something like that.
Or FPS.
Yeah, Foxborough Public Schools, four pillars of success, something like that. And then the only other thing I, it was, it's just style, is that when I read portrait of FPS graduate, I know what it is, that it's the, the words around the circle. So I, I don't know if anyone else thought of that. I, I read what portrait of, if someone looks at this and doesn't know, do they go to the words around the circle quickly? You think, okay?
I could think so.
Yeah, I mean, I know, but I, I just wasn't sure. I wasn't sure if they were looking for something. The portrait of a FPS graduate is, and then you have to kind of make, put two and two together that it's the words around the circle. Is that correct? Because that's what we're going after, right?
Correct. Those words around the circle, that actually is the, the exact process that we're about to engage in again.
Right.
And to your point, I automatically gravitate toward that because I know the process.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm not sure, you know, maybe it's, it's something that I could.
Yeah.
Put a little.
And, and I'm really asking for opinion because it might just be style and how someone sees something, so I'm not sold on it, but I just, you know.
I think that's a graphic, I mean, that's actually a question for you to discuss with your graphic design team. Seeing that this was developed by a, by a student, I think that's potentially worth something to discuss.
Sure. But, but I'm not looking for major, because you said you went right to it and you, you could see it, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
I just looked at it and it's, it's a graphic depiction of a portrait.
Got it, got it.
You know?
Yep.
You see the portrait right there and then you see all the words around it.
Understood.
So I got it. But I can understand how, you know, it might take you a minute.
That's great. But I, I think it's a really good point, too. As, as Dr. Berdus just said, we're engaging in this with the focus groups next week. In the end, we're going to have, I, I think back to Nick Esposito, who was the one who did this rendering back a number of years ago. And so when we go forward, the new logo depiction, what that is and how it's articulating that portrait of a graduate, what it's going to look, to keep that in mind so people do know to go immediately.
Right.
To those.
Yep. The words around the portrait.
The words that are around.
Yeah, 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 but that was well said, that you, you see it as a portrait and then the words are there, so. I got it.
I love the QR codes, too, in the sense that if you're going to send this out to people and you actually want them to do things, empower them to do things. So it's wonderful.
Well, I think that speaks to what you talked about last year where there were so many tables. All of those tables are coming from the Department of Education.
Yes, you were.
So to take up room and real estate on this versus when she said, well, how about a QR code? I'm like, that just, I thought it was a brilliant idea.
Right.
You still get all the information, but you can also then go and look for further information if you want to.
So true, so true.
Well, also, it allows whoever's reading it to do something immediate rather than having to say, okay, I'll look at that later, I'll put it, you know, you're able, and we are of the, I don't want to say generation, but we're at the point where we're so used to, oh, okay, I'm going to hit that link, I'm going to look at it this way, so that when you have something that's written, to be able to transition quickly, it's great. Great job.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. I, I love it. Thank you. So just one question for you. In the, in the headline section on page three, I know what the Unified Basketball and Track Team is. Is it possible to add what that is in there? I mean, I know because I was here the night Mr. Don had talked about it. Is that necessary to add? I just, because I think it's a, it's a great thing, it's a great program. So that's one question. Do with that what you will. Second one, super nitpicky, sorry. It is me. There are a lot of, there are, seem to be a lot of different fonts, and that tends to impact readability if it's in print. And that's, that's a style choice, but if there's a way to, I don't know if you were trying to make them look, you know, in certain cases, whether you're going for standardized or not, just a readability thing. So, but I love the content, I love the format, I would just, those two things were the things that stood out to me.
Mr. Garrity, I see you have your hand up.
Yes. Hi. I'm Joe Garrity. One of the things that you forgot to add in the community report was Unified Bachi. When I saw Unified.
Unified Bachi?
Oh, thank you, Joe.
Unified basketball and Unified Track in there, but Unified Bachi wasn't.
Timeout. We have Uni, I didn't know that, we have Unified Bachi.
I saw it on Twitter.
Just started.
Oh, that's awesome.
That is awesome.
Where do they play? Sorry, selfishly, that was more, no, I, I'll, I'll get the info later.
That's fine.
I wanted to show up.
In color.
Thank you, Joe.
It is, there, there is better readability in color than there is in black and white. I was just, it does look like some of the fonts, they're the same font, but sometimes it looks like there might be different font sizes, and the spacing might be off a little bit, so you might buy yourself some space if you made it more consistent.
Yep, yep, thank you. Yeah, no, I'll look at it.
Thank you. Any other notes for the community report? Thank you so much. It's a lot of work, and I'm glad you enjoyed it because it's a lot of work.
I can't wait to do it again next year.
Yeah, it's, it's always a process. Well, next up, folks, we have the 2023-2024 School Calendar Discussion, and forgive me for asking the question, I should have known the answer. Are we information-only tonight and looking to make a decision tomorrow, or, sorry, not tomorrow, next meeting?
You typically have had two meetings, to present it, to be able to have some time, and then to come back. But we've typically had both meetings in January, so it'll push it to February, which is fine. We're still ready early.
Does that put anybody, does that put anybody in your departments in a bind?
No, and it's already gone to the association, so they've already seen it and provided feedback. So what you have has already been out to all of the administrators and the association.
Okay, that's always my major question, is if, 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 if your leadership has approved it and then members have approved it, or at least have had their say, then that's fine.
And I can point out a couple of conversation points that we had.
Please do, please, yeah.
One is it's different this year that we're having our professional development day in March, it's on March 17th, that's our fifth of our five days. In the past, that has always been in January, but we felt that January is already so disrupted with holidays and you've got midterms and coming back after New Year's and all of that. So this is the first year, we're putting the calendar out first before seeing, you know, that date go by.
Yeah.
But the conversation has been, even with what is planned for March, it seems to, to be a good time period to have that fifth day, not in January. it seems to be a good time period to have that fifth day, not in January, and to have it in March. So, you'll see that it is still in March for this next year's FY24 calendar.
Okay.
Couple of other things that are changes to it. One has to do with the seniors' last day of classes.
Yes.
So, we've always had that on there, we give the last day of classes. But there's confusion, families see the last day of classes for seniors, and they think seniors are done.
No.
They're not. They still have exams the following week. And so, then what has happened is families will plan vacations with seniors and then say they're not going to be there and ask to be able to have their exams early. No, you can't do that. It's, so we're going to add on there when seniors' last day of classes take place, but then we're also going to do the last day of exams. We're adding that. So, we're really communicative of what is taking place for seniors. So, that way, it'll be much more convenient for families to know what the date is.
Very good.
The only other change, really, is it's part of our work with our DEI committee and really looking at being more inclusive and having an environment where everyone belongs. So, we've listed all of the different holidays on the back of the calendar. And so, for those that, like, for instance, if it's Hanukkah, it's putting when it begins. And there's also a note, too, when we've, for the last, oh goodness, it's been probably seven years, when we have those breaks that are free from homework, if you will.
Yeah.
You know, there might be long-term projects, but they're not given at the beginning of a, you know, February vacation, as an example, and do, they're long-term. But to be able to really focus in on the importance of students being able to spend time with families and that the vacations are uninterrupted. So, there's a note there for reminders for faculty to be mindful of all of these religious holidays that are taking place when they are assigning exams or long-term projects. And so, it's really about being more inclusive of our population that's becoming more diverse.
I like that. I mean, and as practice, a lot of building leaders will already, you know, put out a note to staff ahead of the holiday. But I think listing at this, listing it here as a district document, I think, is appropriate and nice and in keeping with our long-term goals. Minor suggestion on that point is considering Lunar New Year as well, which we're just exiting.
Missed that, thank you.
That's fine. But, you know, and then as our population continues to evolve, this will continue to as well. And so, I think that's fine. No, I really like the inclusion. That's a nice idea. Thank you so much. Any comments, questions from the committee?
You have me intrigued by the senior discussion, but I'm not married to it. So, you just got my mind thinking, so I'm just reacting. I mean, there's a piece of me that just wants to say, say one thing, last day of senior exams. I mean, it's a district calendar, right?
Well, that's fair.
And it's.
Because they're beholden to, they're beholden to the district up until that moment.
We don't say high school exams in the third week of January or whatever they are. I mean, we just kind of move along. So, I mean, the fact of the matter is the seniors' last day of exams and/or classes or something. So, I don't know if the district calendar has to say, here's the time when they're going full-time, and here's the week when they're taking exams.
Right, because presumably, presumably.
They have to be there.
Well, and also, they're taking an altered schedule because they're studying for their exams.
Whatever the altered schedule is.
There's still full-time students at that point.
You just have a number of students that might not be taking exams because of AP courses or because of Strive for 85. If they have a particular average, then they're exempt from taking exams. So, you're still communicating to parents when the students are physically expected in the building for the day and when they're not.
No, that's fair.
And it's a unique, I know it's a unique thing.
It's a unique schedule, too.
Then, okay. Then I think listing both is, I think listing both. Mr. Garrity, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I guess so.
Just to add on, I see that the term three end date is at the end of March rather than the first week of April. Usually, it's the first Friday of April.
Correct. I think that's indicative of the, that we're starting a tad earlier and ending a bit earlier as well.
It's trying to balance off the terms.
Yeah.
I didn't hear the first part, if I, I'm thinking I heard the first part, but I want to make sure I heard it correctly. It's really looking at the number of days in a term where we have quarters for the middle school and high school, and so that they're balanced. So, you're going to have some fluctuation in those dates.
Yeah, because I remember that calendar, you're kind of 2018-19. Term three began January 28th, 2019, and then ended Friday, April 5th, 2019.
Every year, it's going to vary just a little bit based on when the school year starts.
Yeah, you're right, plus or minus a week, Joe.
Because one year, didn't we try out ending term one a week early to add on for term two because of all the disruptions in November and December into January?
That sounds right.
Yeah, no, I think that might.
Before COVID, this happened.
I think your memory is correct. So, any other comments or questions or things that you want admin to go back and research or find for the committee prior to moving on?
Yep.
Okay, well, then we'll look forward to bringing this back on the next agenda and going on.
The only other thing that's not here that we'd had some discussion about is putting information on the back that had to do with the absentee line and directions for when a student is absent, what parents should do.
If you think you have room on the copy, fine. It's seasoned to taste.
So. Should we throw that in here, too? That's a serious question, I'm not, I mean, I realize it.
When kids are absent?
Just the QR code to that or whatever. Do we need to? If this is another communication going out and we're trying to stress.
Well, that's going out to all community members and you not necessarily have students in school.
Perfect.
And businesses as well.
And businesses as well.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, yeah, that's how, when you say all community members, we mean, we mean members of the business community as well. That's right, I'd forgotten about that, thank you.
But you are thinking of every single detail.
I'm trying to reinforce the message.
You just like QR codes.
He's crazy-go-nuts for QR codes, I like not to get into it.
The absence lines, that's a pretty good idea because they, people will hang the calendar somewhere, right? Most of us hung the calendar on something.
That's true, actually.
Yeah, you kind of know where it's at all the time, right?
For some people, it's our screen background, so, there you go. All right, moving on.
So, we'll bring it to the next meeting for your approval.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. And we'll look forward to having a vote on it next meeting. Moving on, Unexpired Term Fulfillment from Southeast Regional School Committee. This is our local VOTAC. It's a joint appointment with the Board of Selectmen and Foxborough School Committee. This is a discussion item. I don't mind starting, Dr. Berros, do you or anybody else?
You can go ahead.
So, as of a few weeks ago, a vacancy opened up on Southeast Regional School Committee. And the way their school committee works is they have representation from each of the towns that regularly, at least by charter, send them students, and we're one. And our local Foxborough representative, Mr. Stephen Uden, who also served on this board for a time, needed to resign and, for personal reasons. And the committee's in really good shape right now, but it falls to us and the selectmen to appoint or not a member to serve out the remainder of his term, which ends, I believe, November of 2024. Not this coming November, the following November. I was mistaken in my understanding on that, but the remainder of Mr. Uden's term. And that is something that I was going to ask Dr. Berdos and your building leads to if you would consider putting out a blurb in the next, it's not an emergency, but the next regularly scheduled update that your office and then the various buildings might be sending out to families, directing them to, for any interested party to, they can get in touch with me. And then I can collect that information to share out to the committee. And can vet folks coming in for that. My understanding is we're not under any. Southeast will continue to function with four members. And we don't need to appoint somebody, but if somebody from the community is interested in stepping forward to serve out the remainder of Mr. Uden's term, it's a good opportunity to serve that community that serves so many Foxborough kids and families really well. So, that was that. I don't know if anybody on the committee had any questions or anybody from admin.
I do.
Please, Ms. Raymond.
So, when, has this happened in the past where our school committee has had to appoint someone to complete a term?
We have here on the Foxborough Committee, when we had somebody move out of town, so that's part of your policy, if they move out of town, then we have to appoint. And there were two or three people, I think, that came forward at that point in time. That's when Tina Bellinger joined the committee.
First time she joined the committee.
Yes.
Nice memory.
So, we've not, that I can remember, or not in the 12 years that I've been here, that we've had to do this for the Southeastern School Board.
And is there a methodology of how we as a school board or our school committee is supposed to determine how, who to appoint? You know, if we have a number of people who come forward, is there something where we just can decide?
There is not written, Ms. Raymond. I was going to offer, but I was actually going to offer a suggestion for your consideration, but just to keep it broad, that we look at any people who put their names forward through a couple of different lenses. One is having a a specific and demonstrable interest in both Southeast as a school and their educational model. And two, having a demonstrable interest and/or experience in the three mandates for all school committees, including ours, which is budget, policy, and evaluation of leadership and thereby district goals. Just keep it broad that way. But those are, I think, at the heart of the matter, being invested in the Southeast community, if not the community specifically, the mission of the school. And then, secondly, just the three core mandates of the job, which are the same as our three core mandates. But I'm prepared to put that in writing for people. That was just my suggestion. That way, we could just have something to vet folks against and similar to how we've gone through our other selection processes. We can look at, not that I'm expecting to be flooded with folks, although we, I'm sure Southeast would love to be. It's good for them, good for their kids. But I would ask anybody to put their name forward, chat with them, and ask them to send any credentials forward. And then we could spread them amongst the committee and look at it on face value there. And then have a meeting where we comment on that and then have a discussion about potential candidates. That's just my idea.
So, what I heard.
Please.
Is we want to solicit interested parties from the community.
Yes.
They should submit their names to something that we'll identify in just a moment. We will we will, as a committee, review those names and their interest and backgrounds, which, you know, depending on what we ask them to submit. And then potentially invite them in just to introduce themselves and then make a decision.
Didn't even mention that, but sure. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I guess I would want to.
I realize I created that last part in my head, but.
That's fine. But I mean, I think, I think this is honestly, this is something that we need to create and handle responsibly.
Okay. If that sounds like an agreeable process, we can, I certainly, I repeat that. I think it would be very important that we try to put a target date to this, even though we know that committee can operate with four members and they continue to vote at the forum and all those things. We, but we need to drive ourselves, I think, by looking at some type of date that we want to have at least a decision made, whether that is we have someone or we don't have someone and we'll continue to look, much like we do when we're looking for, you know, new leadership at our schools.
Can I add one thing, too? It's, you kind of made a comment like they can, you know, go, we can add or not add. But I think it's very important that Foxborough was represented at Southeastern. And so, right now, you've got the other four districts being represented with their members, and Foxborough isn't. And we do have a number of students that are there. And I think we want to be as responsive and responsible on that level and having our representation there, too. So, I think it's very important that we find somebody that really would like to fill that role. It's a great way or a great opportunity to get in for a year and a half without having to go through the process of election or anything else like that and get the opportunity to find out if you really like it or not, but also to represent Foxborough on that board. So, I think it is something you need to kind of push a date and try to get done.
To that end, I was going to suggest that we accept names through our next open meeting. And then by close, the day before our next open meeting, that we have a slate of names to look at. Doesn't mean it'll work.
Let me ask you, in response to that, do you feel, does the committee feel like we are comfortable not having representation until such time we appoint someone? Or does it make sense for one of us to sit on that committee until such time as we can appoint someone? Don't.
No.
Sorry, I don't, I don't know what the answer is.
Process work doesn't work that way. You can't just pick somebody and, because it still has to be approved by the school, by the Board of Selectmen as well.
Perfect, that's great. I just wanted to throw that out there, we think there's actually, this is going to go out longer than we thought.
It's not.
Then we need to understand what other opportunities are.
That's an important point of clarification, because if they just need, if they wanted to stand in, then one of us would, I would, well, I would suggest one of us step up to do that. But no, I think if, the goal is for stewardship to our town and to that school is to have a fully seated member. And I would, so I would, my suggestion would be to collect names of anybody interested up until the start of our next meeting and then vet those candidates as described earlier.
Okay.
Is two weeks enough?
We're in two weeks.
Yeah, I just did a quick search. It looks like there's 10 members on the committee, one from every town, right? Does that sound right? Yeah, because it's Brockton, East Bridgewater, Easton, Foxborough, Mansfield, Norton, Sharonstotan, and West Bridgewater.
And so, well, that makes me want to have our committee member on there even more.
I think we should get him soon.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just asking, is two weeks enough and is two weeks too quick and it's going to be acting?
Honestly, I think members of the select board have been asking people, they put it out in a recent meeting. I think Southeast has put it out to their families. Tonight, we've asked, and if the district is amenable, to put it out to our families here. And I think, yeah.
There's no harm in giving a date.
Yep.
See what response we get.
I agree.
And then move forward with that. My question would be is if people who are interested have questions about how often are meetings or if they have questions about the role themselves, is there someone that they can contact to get more information?
There is.
Or is it just information that's out kind of on the internet to look at?
There is. And forgive me for not having it at the moment, but I've been given the name and contact of the relatively newly appointed executive director, superintendent of that school and their executive assistant.
Holly McLennan.
Thank you. And then in terms of just general school committee service ship, I'm happy to speak to anybody about that. But the superintendent of Southeast is already expressed being eager and willing to talk to any potential folks about that, so.
So, how do people who are interested, who do they send information to?
The only reason I was suggesting send it to me is because I didn't want to overburden Dr. Berdos and her office for a school district that's not her own. And since we're one of the appointing bodies, and the selectmen have already indicated that they would prefer, from an educational standpoint, that this committee take the lead. They'll still vet everybody the same way they're going to vet them, but they were hoping that we would take the lead on collecting names, in which point I guess I, I think that's fair.
I would think they'd send it to the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
For practical purposes, though, wouldn't it make more sense that it does come into potential janitor in our office just because you have a job during the day that you're working at?
I'm told it's you.
Talking about burdening.
Yeah, it would be a little bit more efficient, I think, if it could come to somebody who can answer questions during the day and.
Personally, I would prefer that, however, I didn't, prior to the meeting, get a chance to talk to Ms. Gracia.
I actually appreciate that suggestion, I think that is the right way to go.
If that's something that Ms. Gracia and Dr. Berdos believe that they can handle, then I would appreciate you all being the holding group of that in terms of public trust. Because all I was going to suggest is that it comes to my Foxborough Public Schools account, but it coming into your. Schools account, but it coming into yours, I think, is.
It's fine with me. Makes sense.
It makes sense to me. I just didn't want to overburden them. So, thank you.
And thinking about your suggestion as far as going out through the principal's newsletters, I'm thinking it probably, because of timing, might make more sense for me just to send out a communication through a school messenger that goes out to all families with the information with how to proceed if they're interested.
I trust your judgment on that.
And I can get that sent out tomorrow.
I, I would appreciate that. I think that would garner, I think that would give the most lead in time for the most folks to give it earnest consideration.
And remember, this does not have to be a parent. This could be just a community member at large.
Well, and.
Who has an interest in this, in doing this. I mean, a retired teacher, you know, just somebody who has a, a bent towards education.
Well, Mr. Yudin, who served on that committee for two terms, his students went through Foxborough Public Schools. He just has a deep experience and love of vocational education, and that's what landed him on the committee. And so I think, I think to your point, Mr. Yudina, that's, that's, that's spot on.
Right. I think it would be great to have someone who's in the trades, who's a business owner, someone along those lines, coming from a different perspective. So this is just, this is a great opportunity to get involved, to have some say into how the vocational education system is crafted for years in advance. I know the, this is only for a year and a half, but the work that you do on committees has long lasting implications in effect. And so anyone who's interested, please put your name forward because, and I, I would echo what Bill was saying, is that you don't have to be a parent. You don't have to have kids that are in the system. And, thank you. Please come forward.
The school's in a good place. I mean, they have, I think it's approaching 300 students, and they have given, they, they have over 1,000 people on their waitlist and, and great needs to expand, as do all VOTECs in, 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 in the tri-county area. I mean, there's really a unmet need there, so it's a good opportunity, as Ms. Raymond said. Thank you, everybody, for your thoughts, and thank you for helping us craft that process. As you can tell, I'm comfortable with ambiguity. But I just wanted to make sure that we landed at the, a process that people are going to feel comfortable.
So to confirm the date for the, so we'll send out the communication tomorrow.
Please.
But you're going to want anyone, any interested parties to respond back in time for the next school committee meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Which the next school committee meeting is February 7th.
It is. Tuesday, 2/7.
Depending on what kind of responses we get, we may extend it, but at least now that.
No, I, I appreciate your thoughts on that, Ms. Raymond. I think that's, that's appropriate. Let's, let's just set the deadline and move forward. I love it. All right, moving on. Next up, vote for the MSBA, which is the Mass, Massachusetts School Building Authority. Statement of interest for the Taylor Elementary School, something we've discussed in previous meetings. But we are on the next chapter. Dr. Berdows or Mr. Yudina?
I'll just turn it over to Bill.
So, you know, as you know, we made the shortlist this year, but didn't, didn't get into the final grouping, so, which means we're going to have to resubmit. The statement of interest has just opened up, so we'll be resubmitting pending your approval tonight. And we will also have to go in front of the Board of Selectmen. Each time you submit, you have to have a formal vote by the school committee that they are authorizing and approving the process, and also a separate vote by the Board of Selectmen that they are also authorizing and approving. And in our case, basically, it's for the renovation and modernization of the Taylor School, you know, on a full range, just like we did with the borough. So again, you did this before. It's the same vote. It's just another year.
Yeah. Is there anything you had to change?
No.
Awesome.
Actually, we'll, we'll more than likely, from what they're saying, be able to just resubmit the exact documentation we've done already. It's not going to change. The building hasn't changed.
I love it.
Our education hasn't changed, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the Taylor Elementary School in preparation for, for the submission date of April 14th of 2023.
Can I ask a point of record? I mean, it's saying here that the following language was read into the record and vote was done, so do we have to read it into, I would assume then we have to actually read it into the record.
It was read into the record back in October. Do we need to read it again into the record, I guess, is my follow-up question.
Well, it says the date.
All right, then, fine. Let's read it into the record.
Do we need to read or can we waive the read?
I don't know if we can waive the read.
I don't know that you can.
Let's not, I, let's, let's, let's read it.
It's not that long.
The last person who did a community theater production should read it. Oh, hey, Mr. Cantrell, thank you, for.
Mr. Yudina was just going to read it, but I'm happy to. There we go.
You got it?
Yep. Okay. So, blah, 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 blah. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on January 24, 2023, prior to the statement of interest submission closing date, the school committee of the town of Foxborough, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form to be submitted by April 14th for the Taylor Elementary School located at 196 South Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilating systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Seven, replace of or addition to obsolete building in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, respectfully, respectfully submitted, Brent Ruder, Chairman.
Can I just second the motion now?
I guess so. I would say so.
I second the motion.
All those in favor. Passes 400. Thank you for all the work.
That's right.
Mr. Yudina and everybody.
So I just want to note that I was also, not only was the Taylor School built in 1964, I was born in 1964, and in reading this, the fourth bullet item down, where it says, "Single pane windows are 58 years old, are not energy efficient, and many are inoperable," pretty much describes me at this point, too. So thank you, Bill, for putting all of that in writing. Nathan, any comment on that?
Pretty old to me.
We like you, Nathan. We like you, Nathan. Come all the time. All right, moving ahead. Review and approval of weekly warrant approvals and reporting practices. This was our practice that we set in as a school committee, I believe, approaching a year ago, that every six months we would look at our practice for approving weekly warrants expenditures. And the shift that we had gone through was from having a quorum of committee members come in and sign them weekly, which was proving to be a burden in terms of just getting people in, and the time spent and people staying late, was to have a designee person, basically a first-chair person, take, take it and sign off on them. And yet, the, the, the balancing of that was to have larger expenditures reported out regularly in our packets as part of the public record. And Ms. Ladani has been serving that purpose. She's not here tonight, but she was fine with the discussion proceeding regardless of what the committee decided, and she conveyed her willingness and interest to continue doing that, if that's the committee's will. But I think the bigger question is, do, is the committee and is administration okay with the current practice, and do we want to continue it? I do like that this body decided that we should review it every six months. I think that's just good due diligence on our part, so we don't get stuck in a rut. So any comments or questions from the committee, please?
I think it makes it more efficient. We don't get the, we still have, you know, we, we did have, with Sarah being out, being away this week, I, I, we had a general reminder that went out, and that was great.
Sure.
I think the addition of the, you know, the budget items that exceed certain dollar amounts is the key to it. So I'm comfortable continuing with the single signature and continuing with this process of reporting out the, the, you know, over, over $25,000 items. Now, Sarah has been doing it for a year, so if she's, if that's becoming a thing, we can talk about somebody else doing it. I, I'm also available to do it if it's becoming a burden for her, or becoming an inconvenience for her.
Well, I think we can, I, I think setting that aside, by, in terms of the overall practice, is that something the committee has continued to be comfortable with?
I'm still comfortable with it.
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with it. I would ask, is, is it working for the administration?
Is it working for central?
I think it's working a lot better than the old practice, just because, again, we're not trying to chase down three people.
Yeah.
And we have to have the warrant signed off to be able to process them. So I think this is a, a step that's worked well, and actually gives all five members access to seeing the data that you didn't see when three members signed off.
No, I think, and that was, and to your credit, Mr. Yudina, that was your suggestion. I think, I think that's, I think that's a net improvement in terms of transparency and, and, and information sharing. I, I, I would personally like to continue it. I think it's an improvement. So with that, that's something we should vote on specifically for continuing the practice. And then in terms of Ms. Ladani, if she wants to continue it, that's just something we can discuss by affirmation.
Do we need to, in, in voting on it, do we need to name her specifically?
No, we don't. It's more the practice. The innovation is the practice, and, and the idea that we had voted that one member can sign off on it legally, provided that the larger expenditures come out for the full committee to review.
It's my memory that we had to name one member.
That's my mem, that's my memory, too.
For the timeframe, that member had to be appointed, that it wasn't somebody that we could shift through. So it was one person. So my question is, does, does Sarah want to continue to do it?
She does.
She does. Okay.
She does, but if anybody else wants to, and this is conveyed in writing to me prior to this meeting, but she's also fine if somebody else wants to take that. My understanding, and then in terms of voting, and then please do correct me on this, Ms. Raymond, I thought that we could vote the specific procedure, and then who is a separate item.
It would have to be a separate vote, then.
Correct.
So I wouldn't.
Did, who's your member?
Question would be, is, if we're voting, then are we voting to continue to have Sarah do it for a timeframe until we can come back and vote again on appointing somebody else? So do we need to go through that, or do we just either?
It's either two separate votes. One on the process, do we continue the process? Yes. And then do we want, who do we want to continue it? If somebody wants to nominate Sarah, then great. That's the way I was envisioning it. Doesn't mean that's the way it needs to come.
I actually don't remember the exact day that we did it, so I was just really wondering if we actually, if, if, if our desire was to review it or to approve it annually. I just don't remember if we actually said approve or review, because if we're just reviewing, we can just review it and not take any action, and the absence of action is an approval, right? But I don't know if we said approve every year.
Given, my preference, and this is only my preference, is 20% of this committee, is that given the amount of money that flows through the office, I think us voting on it is part of our due diligence for the, for the, for the community.
My memory is that it, it came from, and I might be wrong in calling it a bylaw, or it came from a.
Came from the state.
It came from the state as saying that we have the authority to be able to do this.
We did.
But we have to, in order to do it, we have to appoint one person. We have to come up with a procedure on doing it, but appoint one person. So my question, because I don't have that in front of me, is, does it have to be renewed every year, or, you know?
My memory is, we weren't voting to, to approve the process every time. We were going to review the person. Was that person, after six months?
Right.
Still comfortable doing it? That's what, when we did this, what, two, a year and a half, or whenever it was, that's what I thought we were doing, not saying that we were going to say, is this the right process? But is this person still?
You're right, Rob. I had, I had asked, I had asked Dr. Berdows and the admin to just put the whole thing on, mostly just to foster discussion, just to make sure everyone on the committee was fine with the process as well.
Right. I don't.
I, I, I had asked.
What I would propose, that if, if we do, if we did say we were going to review the policy and reapprove it every six months, we don't need to do that every six months. It's working. We haven't had an issue. I think we could extend it to say every year, every X number of years, if we need to do that. I don't think it's necessary at this point, after having done it for a year and a half, to say this process isn't successful.
Yeah, that's good.
So I, I'm not sure what we, if we are just voting on Sarah, who's willing to stay doing this, are we revoting? Are we?
My intent was to vote on the process and the person.
Okay.
Can, can I just make a suggestion, unless there's something?
Always.
That we have to do it at, at this meeting, I would suggest moving it to the next meeting and having, you know, the notes from what we did last time, so that we know what we're voting on.
Yeah, no, we'll just call up the minutes from the previous meeting.
Because I just want to make sure that we're in conformity with the state mandate of what we have to do for this, because it is a state mandate as to how we appoint this person, giving, basically giving them the powers to, to sign the checks and the warrants.
Other thoughts on that?
I, I would like.
I have no.
I would like us to be clear on what we are supposed to be voting on.
It's fine. I think that's, then that's fine. That's, that's comfortable level, then that's the responsible course of action. So then, then we're going to make a motion to table this until next meeting and delay a vote until then, if anybody wants to make a motion of that effect.
So I move to table discussion and voting on the weekly warrant approvals and reporting practices and person appointed to that position until the next meeting.
Second?
All those in favor? We're O O, and I appreciate, Ms. Raymond, as always, I appreciate your discretion. And, no, seriously, your thoughts on that? That's, that's fine. All, I mean, let's, let's make sure we've crossed the Ts and dotted the Is, and we'll be looking at the specific language that we used last time. I think that's fine. And I think, I also think that the conceptual discussion that we had tonight is fruitful. And if everyone thinks in concept that we're good moving forward, then I think that's, I was more after the that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, honestly, that's where I tend to think more conceptually, and I, I think that, I'm, I'm, I want to make sure that people are, admin, committee are comfortable with that, given the amount of public dollars that we're talking about. So, well, thank you for that, everybody. I appreciate the lively discussion. Moving along, we're to other matters. I usually go down the line. Your last, Nathan, come up with something good.
He's making a go first. It's his first minute.
It has to be in limerick form.
That's right.
That's the other rule. I'm just kidding. Ms., Mr. Cantrell?
I just have a proposed agenda item for an upcoming meeting. I don't know if we can fit it into the seventh meeting. I do think it is time for us to start the discussion on the mascot and logo.
Okay.
I'm not sure how we start that conversation, but I do think we need to formalize that and start that conversation. And my other note is, once again, encourage people to take advantage of, you know, some of these programs that are happening over the next couple of weeks around substance and addiction. It's a super important topic, and there are all sorts of resources that are available, and we should, you know, promote that as much as possible.
Exactly. There's resources out there, and a lot of our young people don't realize that there are. Mr. Pierce?
Nothing. Thank you very much.
Ms. Raymond?
Nothing to add?
Dr. Berdows?
I'll just mention, happy for Janet, sad for us, that, as you know, she's announced her retirement at the end of March, and so we did post the position last Friday, and where it is an administrative position that goes to the school committee and has a piece here. I just wanted you to be aware that we posted it last Friday, and it will close the second week of February, and then with the start date to be the beginning of April. But just wanted you to be aware that that posting's out there, in case anybody, you know, stops you and says, what's that posting about?
Right. And to be clear, this can be, this does not have to be somebody who lives in town, but somebody who's interested in serving the community and the district.
Yeah, it's, it's the administrative assistant to the superintendent of schools, but they also.
also have the role of being the secretary to the school committee.
Yeah.
So that's part of the function of the position. So, the full job description, it's on School Spring, and all of the qualifications and, you know, expectations that are there, which is a very long list, and Janet does an outstanding job, and so, we're happy for her to be able to retire at the end of March, but at the same time, you know, sad to post that. But I thought that it would be important for you to know at this time.
I'm sad to post it, too.
We're very sad to post it. I mean, you've, honestly, you've kept us together through not the easiest set of years, so. It's hard to be somebody who's such a force of nature and yet has more discretion than the grave, so I think it's...
Interesting, thank you.
No, seriously, I mean, it's, it's a remarkably important position, and thank you. What, I'm going to keep talking about Janet? No, I'm just kidding. Dr. Burrows, what do you have?
I have nothing to add, except that Janet will be very missed.
You're here. Mr. Yudina?
I have nothing yet.
Nathan? A joke, perhaps? Thank you. And I also have nothing, but just my ongoing thanks to administration for all the work you put in to get the budget out, the committee report out, and everything that goes into it. It's Herculean, and so, thank you so much. All right, with that, entertain a motion to adjourn, if anybody's interested, or we can hang out.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, shoot.
Second.
All those in favor? 400, we stand in adjournment.